Neighborhoods of, in this area and other areas that need proper drainage. And, uh, and that would be my biggest point as far as we're concerned, homeowners right here, uh, as far as all of this development goes as well, um, it struck me that EPA should probably be involved, uh, so, uh, so we don't lose, uh, all this runoff ability and soaking up ability for the land, which would include the new developments and our neighborhoods. It's drainage and, uh, environment.
I'm Kathy Martinez, 197 Edgbrook. This has been happening for the past three years to us. We get it from the east. We're not the only ones. My neighbors next door, the Johnsons, the one on the other side, Cindy and Dan, I think his name is, we're all getting killed. I know that Pat and Jerry Hart.
Steve?
It's, I have pictures here from Friday. This is nothing. I can give you pictures from the last three years. It comes in, our entire backyard is underwater, our garage, we might as well just chop it up and throw it out. That's how crap it is. Friday, again, it gets in there, it gets through the garage, through the, through the side, into the driveway, then it comes around the side and goes into the crawl space. It's really wearing on our house. Now, we don't really get flooded from the creek unless like September. September killed us, obviously eighty-seven killed us. But this is, is just, it's nuts. And it's like I said, it's our neighbors next door, and like he said, he did follow it. And then one night, the best one was in February, when I actually got Alderman Canine out of bed on a Saturday night because I couldn't get anybody's attention, when the water pipe broke on Oakwood, like I said, in February, when it was freezing, and my backyard, our backyard, sorry, froze. It, it went into the garage, it went down everywhere, it went into the crawls, our entire, it was like ice pit. And then finally, like I said, Public Works really does work hard. Those guys are, I feel sorry for them. I mean, it was freezing cold, one guy finally came out, like what, about midnight or something like that? But it took him forever, well, then it's too late. There's absolutely nothing in our garage, aside from the freezer that he put up, that's worth anything. Oh, and his motorcycle. But it's, it's just garbage, and, and, and I don't know what to do. I, in February, like, cause I know a couple of you knew about that, but my mom got sick and that took precedence over that, so I just, but now, you know, after Friday, I was like, I give up. Because it does stink, like he was saying, last night, oh my God. I was sitting on Addison Road, we're buying friends, hit a bunch of people, all of a sudden, we're like, what stinks? I mean, it smelled, you guys had it smell last night. That's the first time I've ever smelled. I don't know what, like Steve said, and what he said, there is crap all over the place. I couldn't, was it Friday morning when I told you the source? I took pictures of that too. I could not believe that. The source just came up so fast in front of my house. I've never seen that before. Something has also changed. I don't know what it is, I don't know where it is, but we've been here since eighty-two. I, I used to think I knew how that went. I don't anymore. And I said, what, what's killing us is everything. We're just, it, it doesn't matter how much it rains, we get flooded from the east. When it really floods, well then, you know, we're, we're just gonna buy a boat. You know, we're not gonna move, you know, and I don't wanna be one of those creek people cause we're not one of the creek people. You know, we, we live in Wooddale, I love Wooddale. I've been wanting to live here since I was twelve. But like Steve said, we, we really need somebody to get over there. All that building, all that cement, all that concrete. Like I said, I can show you pictures here, it's just, you know, all our grass, everything's going. So we really need you guys to do something. And I, I, I saw some of the studies. I also saw that if you were only one house and you had a problem with your backyard, yeah, whatever, I, I read something like that. So, but if you had more than one house, well, we do have more than one house. I think what we need, and I'll do it if I have to, because you guys know I was just on that committee, or that I joined a cert thing, I'll go door to door to find out how many people are getting the back flood in their backyard that never used to on Edgbrook. Because, like they said, mosquitoes, but you don't even know what's out there anymore. We can't walk on the side of our house, we can't walk out. The, the driveway's cracking up, like I said, forget the garage. It's just, we really, really need your help over there. And like I said, I, I commend the city people, the work, they do do a good job, and thank you for the phone calls. That was nice. Didn't understand the second one, but, yeah. And same with the cert committee. You, you kinda really didn't use it on Friday. You, you could've. I went out and I actually helped till I could, and did what I could, but pretty much we know what to do. But I think maybe aside from the phone calls, which was nice, they could've called out some of the cert people, so we could've went door to door and done something. So, we, thank you, and I'm sorry, and I, I appreciate you taking time out for us, cause like I said, like Arthur said, your time is valuable, but we really, really need your help. Thank you.
I wanted to really briefly try to respond to the Martinez's in particular.
Just, just one final note, just to repeat myself, actually. Our neighborhood needs better drainage system, and this, all this new development needs to be monitored, or at least have the consideration of EPA for all of those types of, you know, the land and the soaking up of, you know, you're taking away everything, you're creating flood conditions. So, you can develop, but as, as long as you coordinate something that would protect against that. Anyway, those are the two issues, I'll just, water.
Okay, one thing real quick too, what you did like by Steve, it did take a lot of the water. I think that's what needs to be done on Oakwood, cause a lot of those people that built are the ones that are rebuilding, they just buried right over the ditches. So now you got all that water, and you got all that concrete going this way, and those people don't care, they just sit there. I've also, we had to move our water to make sure it goes in the streets, so we drain right. During September, and I have videotape, I had people, I saw people pumping right out their basements, coming straight down the driveway. I, I can show you films like you would not believe from September. So, if you, dig a ditch, I'll dig the, no, I can't. But I would help dig in the ditch if I could on Oakwood, but I think that would be a big help also. So, hope, yeah.
You're, you're both right, and Alderman Wesley spoke about the, the drainage study that's in the capital improvement plan budget, and, and that's exactly what it's about. It's, it's to try to manage that, that flow that we're getting from these, these torrential downpours, in some cases not even all that torrential, that are, that's running across the land, which is already saturated from months of, of too much rain, and causing the first flood of two floods, second being the one that comes from the creek. I've lived on Forest View since nineteen seventy-three, seen a lot of floods. I've owned a house on Forest View for eleven years. In the last two years, I've had to run multiple pumps in my basement, and my parents who also live on Forest View, I now run a pump in their garage. And they're high land, that's all the surface water that we're talking about. My theory is, and I think it's a pretty sound one, it's, we know we were in a twelve-year technical drought. During that period of time, we experienced a, a building boom. During that building boom, and not a lot of rain, uh, we, we crossed over point of critical mass, meaning the, the density of all the new construction finally reached that point where the, the land isn't able to shed it or absorb it anymore. We come out of that, that building boom and that twelve-year drought with five-hundred-year flood, and more rain than we actually saw quantity-wise in a twenty-four hour period in eighty-seven, and, and you realize the adverse effects of, of what I consider overbuilding. So not only do we have the money for this, for this drainage issue in few areas in town, but Oakwood, Edgbrook, Forest View, and Harvey for sure, um, you know, we are also very close to finishing a new zoning ordinance that is, is better addressing the, the mansionization of Wooddale. It may be too little, too late, but it's been identified that those are all real problems, and, and at least as far as the drainage problem and what the Martinez's are talking about, I really hope to be able to get that resolved in the next year or so, or two, whatever it takes to, to finish the study, to finish the engineering, and to come up with the funds for that. Because the drainage is absolutely, as far as I'm concerned, the city of Wooddale's problem, and, and needs to address that. The ultimate height of the creek, caused by everybody building to the north of us. It's, it's a, it's a county and state issue. I don't know how much we can really do about that. But this drainage issue, absolutely, I'm, I'm convinced that this council, this city needs to deal with that. Thank you.
I do have a question on the reservoir. Mister Mayor, I understand that you're the one that gets the phone call from the county when they open that reservoir? And I was wondering if there's a way of informing the aldermen of that word, or notifying the aldermen that the reservoir is open? How does that go about?
Uh, I think I did call you and tell you that?
No, I called you.
Okay. So, yeah, once I got the phone call, I first called the, the police chief, so he notifies the sergeant on duty for those people calling into the police department, and then I notify all the aldermen who have expressed an interest for that information. And then I call some of the residents as well, like George got the word out as well.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else could address the council? Okay. I appreciate your concerns. It will be put on agenda, find out what the status is, hire the firm to do this study. I, I don't know where it's at right now. I will put it on the agenda, and we'll see where that at. Meanwhile, we will, I, we will talk to Public Works and go and wash those streets down. Am I right, John? And in the meantime, maybe we could look into a, a contract, someone out to sweep those streets with the speed bump after we clean them, if there is a company out there, and see what we could do on that. All I could do for you right now until we get the study done. I, I can't tell you I'm gonna solve it until I get the study done. Okay? Or we could wash those streets down and get that all cleaned up though. Good, John?
And can, we also ask staff to look at any possibility of sanitization of, of non-paved areas. Is there, is there a neutralizing agent out there that won't kill plants and animals that will, you know, that, that will deal with the health concern in the grass areas?
We will look into it, and if there's anything we can do barring going out and physically picking up or raking any of that debris up, and then physically just washing it down with mass quantities of water and diluting it down, those would be the two recommendations. But I will look at other alternatives as well.
And thank you. Yeah, I'll, you know, I'll just continue with my committee now that we started it. Discussion on the, the other item that was on the agenda to discuss a part-time vehicle maintenance, I believe one of the aldermen asked to put this on the agenda. We did have this conversation. I would recommend if the council choose to go that route, that we direct staff to go ahead and hire a part-time mechanic, not to exceed over two hundred hours, twenty hours a week, two thousand, two thousand hours, twenty hours a week. I'm sorry, one thousand hours, twenty hours a week for a part-time mechanic. I would direct staff to do that if that's the council's direction that we are going to do. Alderman Luton?
Would you clarify if we have a union contract that defines part-time workers as non-union, or do we have no contract?
It would have to be put, Mister Kramer, could you answer that question?
Correct. We would need to negotiate that during the contract negotiations, and both negotiate a new position description for a part-time vehicle mechanic and a pay scale for that position.
Then I would make a motion, we postpone this until we have a contract that's viable with this, this motion.
The question here is that if we go ahead, Mayor, tell me if I'm wrong or right, could we discuss this in open session, the contract issue, or do we have to do that in closed session, or that it's got to do with negotiations?
Well, it's on the agenda only as a discussion item. So you may discuss that in committee. If you decide you wanna go forward, that is something that we have to notify our union attorney on, or our labor attorney on, and that would, is something that does need to be bargained.
So my, my, my point is that you're creating a conundrum, because there's no definition of whether this is a union or a non-union position. And this should be resolved before we make this decision. I won't vote for anything until it's resolved.
Alderman Roy Wesley? Um, John, was there any discussion with the union at all on this? Did you contact a union?
Again, Mayor, is that, I don't mean to step out of line, could that be discussed in open session?
No, that, that is crossing the line.
Okay.
So my suggestion then, Mayor, I, maybe we need to take this in closed session, since there is gonna be a lot of conversation in this, and we bring it back on the table during council, next council meeting, to discuss the legal allegation with the contract.
All right, I'll add it to executive session as a personal item.
Mister Coles?
I would say we should put it on an executive session before we decide on anything.
Okay. So that item will be removed, anyone else have a discussion on that? That item will be removed off this agenda tonight and be discussed in executive session and next council meeting. Items considered for future meeting. Brush pickup. The other item that I'd like to bring to the attention, that it ain't on agenda today, but we did have a conversation with Clark Mosquito, and John will give you update on that, when spraying will be started and how far we are into the mosquito project. John, wanna give us update on that?
Thank you, Chairman Wesley. I spoke with Clark Mosquito today, and we did a harborage route last night for the city, and that means any areas, the borders, the city of Wooddale got sprayed for nuisance mosquitoes. We did get some trap counts that were elevated, and we do expect a brood hatch in the next couple of days. So Clark Mosquito and I conferred again, looking at some additional trap counts, made the decision to do a citywide application Monday, the twenty-ninth, which should take us through the holiday weekend, so residents can enjoy the outdoors a little bit more without the nuisance of mosquitoes.
Newzil Police?
After listening to the residents, I know we have that treatment plant study going on, I'd really like to know where we are with that, because I'm hearing sewers are backing up, taking care of that plant should become a priority of the council, because that also would alleviate some of the problems on those streets.
I, John, you care of comment on that, on the email you got from Smith Engineer?
I'll just say that staff is working with SEC on that treatment plant study. We are progressing on our task list, and you should be getting a new status report update at the next information items packet.
So basically, once we get this study, we're either gonna go with the revamped treatment plant, making it expanding, whatever, or go with the new. So we're gonna have to make a decision, otherwise...
Mister Coles, I have...
All right, last night they sprayed all over. I heard the guys spraying on our street, so I think they did the whole city last night.
No.
A part of the city. I know they did our end, because I heard them last night, around nine, nine-thirty, ten o'clock. Went through.
Mister Luton?
John, I'd like to ask you, and let me preface it first, I know that Clark does mosquito traps to get specimens for study. What is the result of the West Nile virus assessment?
Do you mean specifically in Wooddale?
I think that's where we live, yes.
Currently, we did have trap counts, no QX mosquitoes were found, which are the ones that carry West Nile virus. So currently, no, there is no West Nile virus in the city of Wooddale.
You brought up the question, did I want the city or a larger area? Does that mean you have figures for a larger area? If so, what are they?
We do get data for other communities, neighboring communities. I did not bring that data with me, and I can get Clark Mosquito to give me an update, and I will forward that onto the council and information items.
If you just looked at it briefly, did you see any?
First, first of all, the only reason why I brought this up is to bring you up the date that we're gonna be spraying. I'm sure he hasn't even looked at the data yet, because he just got it. Okay, so, I mean, I don't think he's going, he don't wanna give you a, a raw answer, he wants to give you the honest answer. I mean, you're putting him on the spot. The only reason why I brought this up, I want you people to know that, as the aldermen and the people out there, that we are going to start spraying this, this week. That's the only reason. I mean...
I, I think people should know whether there is a danger of a fatal disease being spread.
I understand that, but he does not have the data in front of him. So how could he answer if he don't have the data in front of him?
By saying he'll come, he'll, he'll come back with the answer next week.
It's fine, but you're asking him on the spot tonight for it.
Is there anything wrong with putting an employee on spot?
Well, he, he ain't gonna sit there and lie to the people if he don't have the info. So don't put the people on the spot. The other item that I wanna add on the agenda is I wanna add the study on the flooding issue, that what is the status on that contract to be awarded for, for the study that we put in, to the CIP project? And I appreciate that Dave McGrath will be at the next meeting to answer any other concerns that come. Mister Newzil?
I don't know if this is the spot, but I had asked the manager last week if we could get a spreadsheet of all the CIP projects, so we know where we stand and, and get updated on a monthly basis. So when residents ask us, we have an answer.
Okay. But that on the agenda. Alderman Roy Wesley?
Um, Mister Chairman, last week I brought up two things, was the part-time mechanic and about surface water drainage funding for that? And I was wondering, it wasn't on this agenda, if it could be put on the next committee agenda?
What, what was a part-time mechanic and what?
Was surface water funding.
That was under finance.
Okay, I'm sorry. I think we have to look at South Cedar again, I'm sure everyone looked at those pictures that they received in their packet too, so, thank you.
Okay. Any other items? Can I make a motion adjourned?
Sir?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion curious.
Okay, this is the continuation of the Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee meeting. The next item we'll be discussing is a report and recommendation logged in as case number zero-nine-v-three. This is the Wooddale Bowl located at one fifty-five West Irving Park Road. This is a request for a front yard variation. In a brief summary, a request has been submitted by the owner of the Wooddale Bowl, Mister Malone, to, to construct a patio on the front of the building, in between the building and the sidewalk. This would be a concrete patio, partially covered with, with awnings or some kind of a roof structure. It's my understanding that it would, it would be pulled out from the building all the way to the edge of the property line, which is, I believe, within just a few inches of the sidewalk. Beyond that, we have some additional information from the owner, as presented in the zoning board of appeals meeting, where he discussed a, a somewhat of a renovation or a slight reworking of the, of the facade. Talked about the use of this patio, why he needs it. But beyond that, we have no other drawings or, or specifics. So I will actually ask if Mister Malone would like to add anything to my premise before we begin discussion of this, since we have very little in front of us. I do believe we've all got the Platte survey and the, perhaps the zoning board of appeals minutes. I know I watched that meeting twice myself, but anything else you can add would be helpful. Thank you, Mister Malone.
Well, my name is Mike Malone, I'm from Wooddale Bowl, one fifty-five West Irving Park Road. I own the bowling alley, and I'm also a resident of Wooddale. I haven't gone to an architect yet, and I, I have somewhat of a problem drawing a patio. I don't know how to explain a patio other than to tell you that I'm making it out of stamped concrete, which is concrete where they use a form and, and colored dyes to make the concrete look better than just normal concrete. So there's, there's a pattern to it. There's a lot of different patterns you could use. I've, I've looked at some of the, the patios that you guys have approved in the past, and, and I know when you had concerns going up to the sidewalk, you had a concern about car traffic being able to hit an area, so I'm, I'm open to design, but the original design I came up with was to use a foundation wall rather than a guardrail, and then to put fencing on top of that, whether it was closed or, or open, fencing wouldn't make much of a difference. And then the awning part, the dimensions of the patio would be approximately fifteen feet by a hundred feet. Building kinda lends itself to thirds. They're, they're about fifty foot wide each. It's the older two-thirds where the, the patio would be. The first thirty foot of that would be kinda more the covered area. The other seventy feet would be open on top. The awning would have a decorative feature that would continue into the seventy-foot area, just to kinda even out the building. And as far as the facade renovation, it was to remove the brown brick that's on the front of the building, and go with a brick that's similar to what's on the west side, so that the, the entire building would kinda look more the same across the front than what it looks like now. So, that's probably about all I can tell you about it.
Um, well, I, I did look at, you know, what drawings we had, which is essentially a Platte survey with the outline of the, of the patio on there, and I, and I did see where the corners of the lot are, and, you know, you're, you're, like I said before, you're pretty much going up to that five-foot sidewalk. That area last year was rezoned to, to the B-four zoning, which is the, the pedestrian-oriented, transit-oriented development. And one of the key, one of the key elements of that was the twelve-foot sidewalk. Now I know that B-four zoning district ordinance talks about how if you have any outdoor obstructions for a seating area, that you still must maintain a five-foot clear path for egress. However, I don't believe it was the intent of the ordinance to, to allow a, a permanent barrier cut into that, into that twelve-foot sidewalk, so that's, that's my big obstacle with, with this. And additionally, as I've always said in the past with any variance, if, if, if I don't understand exactly what it's gonna look like and how it's gonna affect the aesthetics of a, of a very major thoroughfare, I'm reluctant to see the merit in it. So, you know, just, just to be straightforward with you, Mister Malone, I'm, I'm concerned on, on those two issues, but I'll, I'll open it up to anybody else who has questions or comments.
If I could just comment on that comment. Some of the difficulty with designing it has to do with coming to you guys and, and seeing what maybe you're gonna tell me I need to do somewhat. I mean, I could go with a guardrail and an open fence also. I, I'm not looking for you necessarily to design my patio, but I knew you were gonna have commentary on, on what it ended up finally looking like, so as, as far as what it eventually is gonna look like, I'm sure your input's gonna help me determine that. So, as far as it being an improvement, it's definitely going to be an improvement to what's there now, so...
It, it very well maybe, but I don't know that. I mean, and I'm, let me, and I mean this with all due respect. I mean, as, as a citizen and involved and, and a friend, I just kinda go back to my years in architecture school and what the professor said when I tried to talk my way through what I thought a project was gonna look like, you know, just dazzle me on paper, and, and you got a pretty darn good chance of, of things moving ahead. So, that's, you know, my personal theory on it, obviously. I'll open it up now to... I'll open it up now to everybody else. I, I think Alderman Luton did have his arm up first, and I'll go to Alderman Coles.
First, let me say that Mr. Malone is an honorable man, and I've known him for about seven years now, and I've known him to have only the best intentions for the city and to work hard for the city, and, and he's held positions. And when we talk about his property, I want to make it separate from a personal relationship that we have. I have five reasons why I feel that this should be voted down. And one, and actually two of them, you've already alluded to. One, we passed the B4 zoning laws, ordinances last year, and they are now the ordinance of the city of Wooddale. And these ordinances do not even include the business for which he's asking for this extension. He's running a tavern in the bowling alley, which is a sub-business of the bowl, it's a sub-business, it's in the bowling alley, but it's a sub-business. This is not in the allowable businesses in the B4. So this business shouldn't exist according to the law now. However, we have never decided if there's a grandfather clause should be added. We didn't add a grandfather clause, and we didn't say that we couldn't have a grandfather clause. So whether or not the business is legal or not in the Z, in the B4, it would be illegal to extend the business, because the extension would be after the law, the ordinance was passed. Second, we just spent umpteen thousands of dollars for the Lakota Group to give us an opinion of what a city street should look like, among other things. And that's why I queried him to find out what his definition of a pedestrian street sidewalk should be. And he said that they should be between nine and 10 feet, and that is the dimensions that you need for encouraging pedestrian traffic. If this is passed, it would mean that there would be only a five-foot extent, the five-foot sidewalk, and there's no chance for any extension. The third thing is smoking. Mr. Malone wrote that the reason for this, and I'll just quote him in his, in his own handwriting, "The hardship is that the state made a smoking law which has greatly affected my business. The patio is being built to offset this negative effect." Now, if he were going to come into accordance with the B4 law, he would have to change the lounge into a restaurant, so that food service would be at least 50% of his sales. Now, he's told us that there's only 15 feet from the door to the sidewalk. State law prohibits smoking within 15 feet of a door. That means from the door to the sidewalk and 15 feet to the west, it would be illegal to smoke. And that's a $250 ticket. And I think you're, 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 you're going to have a situation where people are going to walk out the door, and they're going to light up right away, and then they're going to get hit with a $250 fine. The next thing is, and, and part of that is that if you do do this, and you give this permission, the next thing Tom Segs is going to want it, Aces is going to want it, everybody else who's got a bar and they want to have people outside smoking, they're going to ask for the same variance. If we don't give it to them, well, then we're just discriminatory. Then the other thing is, the third thing is the jug handle. We are in the process of creating an edgebrook that's going to go under the railroad tracks and is going to take up part of this land, and we're going to be in negotiations with this man under eminent domain. And if that's the case, then this whole program is a detriment to our future negotiations for land use.
So are you saying you want to buy my property now? Is that what you're saying?
That would have to be discussed in closed session.
But I mean, you shouldn't make a basis of a decision for what I can or can't do on my property about some future use you have in mind.
Yeah, we have a use in mind, and it's already been published, and it's up for hearing. And, and it's already been...
So what are you telling me, that when you build the jug handle, that you're going to take the whole bowling alley? Is that what you're telling me?
No, we're taking part of it. It's up for discussion for taking part of that to the jug handle. And the fourth thing, thing is, already, we have a lot of motorists who are illegally crossing the double yellow going eastbound to go into your bowling alley. In 2008, there were 51 arrests on the, on the triangle between Wooddale Road...
And they're not going to my bowling alley, they're trying to get in the left turn.
I have been almost hit twice by two arrogant drivers who went into the left-hand turn lane to the south edgebrook, and they almost hit me when I was turning into edgebrook. They were going into your bowling alley. They illegally make 30-degree turns across the left-south only turn lane to go north to go into your property. There have been 51 arrests. And using the mathematical equation of determining the number of violations, only one in eight violations is ever noticed by the police department. That means that we're, using that calculation, that means there are over 600 illegal turns into the properties on the north side...